Council members, let's resume with the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, my VP, for giving us a break. Okay, one moment, Councilman. We are going to... Madam Clerk, I'd like to take... Councilwoman Abdelaziz, it's item 11, right?
No, number 13.
Which one?
Number 13.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, we're going to take number 13 first, and then we're going to take item 37 on the non-consent. Okay, because we have a director here that's been sitting here, so I'm gonna do the...
Next item is...
Please read into the record, item number 13.
Item number 13, and item number 13 reads, "Resolution Approving One Livery Registration for Fast Lima Inc., whose mailing address is 239 Rosetta Avenue, Palace, New Jersey 07502, and whose parking location is 284-288 Dakota Street. City Clerk, Resolution 19004."
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Abdelaziz, second by Councilwoman Velez. Roll call on item number 13.
Roll call on item number 13 for approval.
Okay, discussion. So, Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yeah, so, the reason why I asked to take this off of consent is because we received emails from a constituent to come make his concerns be heard. Public portion is now closed, that constituent is not here, so I'm making motion to approve.
Council President, please.
One moment. Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. I received the email from the gentleman, but it was only about one piece of property, it wasn't about three of them. So I didn't get the one email. And it was forwarded to David...
All right, so, you know what, Councilwoman, you know, and you're right, we should have not... We did it, we give courtesy to our council members when there's... We've done it in the past when a council member has some questions, but I'd like to move forward, and if there isn't any other...
Council President, yes, I just want to clarify that statement there, Councilman, I don't know if I miscommunicated, but when we was in the discussion earlier regarding an accident, the individual was here, nobody came forward.
Correct.
So, and the point of that he's not here now means that he never was here, whoever made those emails. So I just want to...
So, Councilmember, just with all respect here, all right? If a council member has a question, we have done it in the past, and we will always give the council courtesy, okay? So, we're good? Can we... Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, roll call on item number 13 for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 13 is hereby adopted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, item number 37, please read into the record. Non-consent. What number we now, Council President? Item number 37.
Next item is item number 37. "Resolution Authorizing Award of Contract to Summit Sunday as Ford Construction Company, Inc., for the 2017 State Aid Road Resurfacing Program. Bid Number 18.30 for the Engineering Division of Department of Public Works. Public Works, Resolution 19028."
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman McCoy, second by Councilwoman Velez. Councilwoman...
On the record.
Kalik? He moved his lips, I saw him first.
No problem, you're getting done now. I respect the dean.
He is also the DPW chair. So moved by Councilwoman McCoy, second by Councilwoman Velez, Kalik, and Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 37.
Yes.
Council President. If I may... Councilwoman Cotton? Item 37, I thought that we asked for the list of the roads. That's what we wanted to see, because Councilwoman Mims wanted to make sure...
Well, no, AFAF, we already discussed. AFAF, yeah, yeah, yeah. But AFAF, this is... AFAF was already in, that's been on the works.
Yeah, for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying he don't have it attached here.
It was in an email.
It was in an email?
I saw it as well. Madam Clerk, Director, did you give the list to the clerk? I'm sorry.
I didn't get it.
I sent the list to the BA's office. The request, through the council request.
I think we have.
All right.
I think I saw it.
No, I saw it as well.
It should have gone up.
I didn't see it.
Council President?
Just for Mr. BA, I don't know whether he disconnects to the clerk's office, you know, council members, you know, this isn't new. Anytime, we're always gonna ask for a list of streets, just like the houses, just like, you know, the... Please, let's just make sure that the clerk gets it in a timely fashion, therefore she can, you know...
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Print it and give it to all of us. All right, any other questions to the Director?
Nope.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item 37.
Yes. Roll call on item number 37 for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera?
About time we do an 8th Avenue. I was a little upset when we actually voted to approve a $36 million authorization, and 8th Avenue was not included, which is one of the worst roads in the area. But I appreciate it, thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Congratulations, those are getting paid. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 37 is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Is that 8th Avenue go back to 220?
21.
Oh, 21. Yeah, 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 Councilwoman. Thank you very much, okay. Let's then proceed, I mean, we took off 11 and 12, so...
Can we do 11, 12? Get it out of the way.
What? I know, that's what I'm saying, we took, so we're gonna, Madam Clerk, we're gonna take items 11 and 12?
Next item is item number 11, and item number 11 reads, "Resolution Approving One New Livery Registration for Mr. Conrad Holmes, whose mailing address is 201 East 31st Street, Palace, New Jersey 07514, and whose parking location is 142 Pennsylvania Avenue. City Clerk, Resolution 19002."
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Roll call on item number 11.
Roll call on item number 11 for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 11 is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, item number 12?
Yes. Next item is item number 12. Item number 12 reads, "Resolution Approving One New Livery Registration for JALIA Limousine LLC, whose mailing address is 176 Oak Street in Palace, New Jersey 07501, and whose parking location is the PPA lot of 22-24 West Broadway. City Clerk, Resolution 19003."
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Roll call on item number 12?
12.
No, I'm sorry, 12.
Roll call on item number 12 for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 12 is hereby adopted.
Okay, item number 31.
Next item is item number 31. Madam President, I got some responses from... Did I give it to you?
They table it?
No.
That's good.
From number 31. From Ryan, and I printed it. I forwarded today, and then I printed it out. It's on the side, a response, and I put a number on there. Okay. Next item is item number 31. "Resolution Authorizing Award of Contract to Gulf Connection, Inc., for the purchase of tablets and accessories under new drive-to-contract for the city of Palace, Administration, Resolution 19022."
Do we have a motion?
Moved, second.
Moved by Councilwoman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Everyone has the packet in front of them on item number 31. Mr. BA, I know that Councilwoman Mims had a request, which I see the price of the bags there.
Madam President?
Madam, uh, Madam. Councilwoman Mims.
So, I just think it's disrespectful to, from last Tuesday, to request some information and receive the information at 5:46 PM tonight, on the night we're expected to vote, to be able to vote consciously and to make sure that we're voting in the best interest of our community. So, from Tuesday till now, it does not even say in the email where we, was the rebate given specified. It doesn't, it talks about comparison, which I see here, but it doesn't say, it just, it doesn't tell me if it's the same quote we got originally. If, I mean, there were many questions that I asked on Tuesday, and to get this packet at 5:46 tonight, I think it's disrespectful.
Do we know that Councilwoman Mims, I'm not even gonna go there. I'm gonna let the BA answer on why it was received today.
Mr. Foot is out, he's been sick. And so, he emailed this to me today at 2:47 PM this afternoon, and obviously, there are a lot of things going on in the city right now, so I didn't get a chance to check my email until later on this afternoon. And I had the clerk's office, and I believe Araceli, send it out. So, I don't think it was disrespectful. I understand you got it pretty late, but I think the information that Mr. Foot put together is the comparison that you asked for. He also tried to get the concessions made that you requested last week. I think the biggest concession he got is that he got the price reduced a little bit, as well as getting a newer model. So the model that you had before, this processor is much faster than the one you're gonna get now if you approve this resolution. So, he apologizes, obviously, he couldn't be here. He has all the details on it. But, you know, he took ill the past few days and wasn't able to be here. And I, you know, I apologize, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. BA. Thank you very much. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. Roll call on item number 31 for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We have been talking about this for some time now. As I stated before, it's very hard for me to get anything off my little phone that I have here to look at some of the paperwork that we get constantly. I think this would make it a whole lot easier for all of us. And so, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, give me a moment, I'm gonna pass.
You pass?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
I'm not gonna pass, but I just wanna make my point cross here. We started with $27,000 for 14 tablets. They have three quotes made the same day, you know, January 15, 2019. Now they lowered it to $24,388,14. Mr. Min, with $24,388, we could buy 10 pieces of multi-power 52cc gasoline and brush cutter, four inches. It would be $2,250. We could buy two equipments for start lawn care business for moving package, and it would come up to $8,398. Mr. Min, we could buy 10 Krammen 25cc two-cycle 10-inches gas pole, a saw...
Councilman?
Equipment, hold on, let me get my point.
You made it.
10 pieces, $1,890. With that money, we could buy two more 125cc ATV more lawn mower, $2,599, with a total of $5,199. We could buy DR trimmer, two pieces of those equipments, $1,859. We could go with that, it's a total of $19,598 with 24 cents. The remaining would be $4,789.90. So we could use that money to equip at least the people, the DPW workers that take care of our parts. And that will be in the right hands. I believe I could do what I have in my office with my phone, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. After further review, I was pleasantly surprised to see that the full total price was reduced from $27,662.82 to $24,388.14. This is being responsible. This is responsible governance right here. This is a council, the council and the administration having an understanding that there is a crisis at hand, and we do not want to see the public continuously waste money on wasteful spending. Last, maybe a year or two ago, I came out one day and I stacked all the papers that I received. I think at that time, I was elected as a councilperson for less than a year, and the papers were extremely high. Councilwoman McCoy was the president, they wasn't very happy with my display. But, you know, it started the conversation.
Yes, it did.
And now, the conversation has evolved into us finally getting, you know, being responsible. So we're not spending the amount of $350,000 every year just in the council office alone on paper. We don't have an office, we don't have to have an officer drive to each one of our houses every Friday before a meeting just to drop off a package. That eliminates manpower, overtime, gasoline. We can have another officer being more responsible, taking care of the concerns of the public. We're talking about being responsible, people, being responsible. I'm glad to see that the council, the full council, with the exception of one, is willing to be responsible. But it doesn't surprise me. You know, there's a lot of times when things happen and certain individuals don't quite grasp the full understanding. That's why we have professionals. Everyone may not understand what a gigahertz is. Everyone may not understand what a gigabyte is. Everyone may not understand what a I7 processor is, and how fast and how efficient it would be to be able to get access to all the documents. When a constituent calls me, I want to be able to go right on my device, pull up the information they're looking for. I don't want to have to put in an open request. I'm a councilperson. There's certain information that I need, that I would like to have, that I actually have to put in an open public records document request just to be able to get that. This eliminates that. This takes some strain and burden off of the clerk. This is being responsible. But, and first, before you can be responsible, you have to understand what the measure of being responsible is. I get it, not everyone fully grasps that. But I'm glad that this council does today. I'm glad that this council understands that we don't need to spend more money frivolously, excuse me, that we don't need to continue to burn down more trees. We do need to move into being a more green and responsible community. We do need to be more responsible to the public who is wasting $300,000. And all of, I cannot dispute any of the points that my councilperson of the fifth ward had made. We do need lawnmowers, we do need equipment for DPW. I'd much rather spend $350,000 each and every year on those items that we need, than one year, take $24,000 and buy some cheap Home Depot, oh, I'm sorry, let me not speak down on Home Depot. Because they got good stuff, okay? Let me not, let's not buy some less than adequate equipment. Let's get our DPW workers with the things that they need. I apologize for prolonging this, Councilwoman, Council President, but it is necessary. This is being responsible. And I thank you all for being responsible, Madam Clerk. I thank you for being responsible and taking my vote. It is a yes vote.
Thank you.
Council President, can I make one clarification, if I can? The price of $24,854, that is for 13 tablets. So if we want 14 tablets, it's $26,766, which is here, so...
So is that one of the council...
So, that's what I want to make clear, that we're purchasing 13 tablets and not 14.
Okay, so, wait, wait, wait. Everybody had their moment, please. So...
No. Madam President, if I may?
Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
As I support the council with their vision to go paperless, and I support that, and I support this resolution so we could go green, I am not gonna take a laptop. So, please go with 13. I'm supporting the resolution, I don't want copies. I'm supporting my colleagues. I, I'm not gonna laptop, so I don't wanna...
But Council President, if that is, and we're gonna be reducing, does that mean that we can reduce it to 12?
No, I believe...
Okay, so, let me, let me, let me, hold on. Because, you know, I don't want this to make this a joking matter, because this is serious, okay? And, you know, especially, you know, we vote here as a council. And so, Councilwoman Abdelaziz, my hat goes off to you, okay? Because you finally understood that this is a council... No, 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 I'm not, I'm giving you some props. What I don't want, okay, is for us to try to make each other look bad by bringing a list of items that should be submitted by the Director of DPW. So Councilman, by you doing that, you're putting the Director out there and letting everyone know that he did not submit to the BA, okay?
I disrespect, I never...
Councilman, I'm speaking right now, uh-uh, Councilman.
Hold on.
Councilman, Councilman, Councilman. You had your moment. Councilman, see, there we go again. Councilman, I am speaking.
I'm sorry, Mom.
Councilwoman Velez, I am speaking.
Okay, Mom.
Okay? I gave you your time, you spoke, and you went on, and you went on your rant and showing all the different things that you can, it looks to me like you really want to work for DPW. That's what it really looks like. But the reality is this, the reality is this. The reality is that we're going to be saving $350,000. That is what I want to see put back into our budget, okay? That is what I want to see. I want DPW put in their capital plan so we can go ahead and purchase what they need. I want us to see a full DPW working staff that, right now, is lacking over 60 employees, okay? So, with that said, okay, I appreciate those that do understand that this is something that is needed, okay? I don't want to hear this, you could do business off your phone, you cannot. I don't care what anybody says to me, you cannot, you cannot. So with that said, Madam Clerk...
Now can I speak now?
No, Councilman.
So you got, you're gonna engage me?
Councilman! Here we go again.
Madam corporate counsel.
Councilman!
She's the president, but she engaged in her statement, and I can...
Councilman! Councilman, you, you, I have to buy you Robert's Rules of Order.
Oh, for you.
Okay? I'm gonna, it is obvious that I am calling you insane to you.
You don't have...
That you, I have the floor, Councilman!
You're spending your time on that.
Corporation counsel, for the record. We're in the process of voting. Everyone has said their piece. I even extended, okay? Once the council president speaks... Should a council member speak over the council president?
I think there are two specific issues. Issue number one, while your rules do allow individuals to speak during their vote, after a vote is taken, any future allowances to speak is at the discretion of the council president. To answer your question, as it relates to, well, really, any member speaking other than when they are recognized starts at the discretion of the council president. And obviously, there are measures that can be taken if it is deemed that the council president is acting unfairly, which requires other council members to be involved. But pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, the council president runs the meetings, and the council president decides who has the floor. And speaking about a topic is done during discussion, and it appears that can be done by your rules during the voting segment.
Thank you very much, Corporation counsel. We need to be respectful to one another, we truly do.
Council President?
And, one moment, please. It's just unfortunate, you know, we should not have to get to this, but my statement clearly is, is that we have to respect each other, and we respect each other's votes. And at the end of the day, everyone has a reason why they move forward on how they vote, okay? But let's keep it real also, okay? Don't try to make another council member look bad, all right? Because there is a reality here, and it is true, we are going to be saving over $350,000, which, we talk about going green, going paperless. This is the route to go. So I appreciate, unfortunately, Mr. Foot is not here. I know that he's been working on this, and, you know, it's been somewhat of a challenge trying to get the right item and putting it forth. We're here now, and I'm just happy to say that, you know, we are moving forward. So, Madam Clerk?
Council President?
My vote is yes. Councilwoman Mims first, and then Councilwoman Jackson.
So I know Ryan is not here tonight, but I just want to make sure this message is portrayed. Because this item was tabled so that we can come back to vote based on some requests and some things that are requested. Even though they were late, I accept the apology. But the blessing to tonight's vote is that we're not just getting um, the tablets, which is, is great in and of itself, we're getting better tablets now that we waited. They are cheaper, and we have covers. If we would have voted prior to, it would have went through, we would have missed all of that. So, sometimes waiting is not always a bad thing.
Everything happens for a reason.
It brings us to a place of, um, operating effectively and more efficiently, so, um, I appreciate it being tabled and making those requests and bringing back that information, because now, we will have protective covers for those tablets, and they're quicker, they're cheaper, and so, I appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the?
May I announce the vote? Yes, the vote is eight in favor, one against, item number thirty-one is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Jackson.
Council President, I appreciate the opportunity. Listen, I respect each and every one of my colleagues, as well as the members of the administration. I, I cannot allow for this moment to pass without recognizing this, although we do, um, at, from time to time, take things lightly and, and, and put things in a joking fashion, the measure and opportunity of disrespect is unacceptable, and I won't accept it at all. And I'm, and, uh, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that, you know, you are the Council President, you should be addressed as such. If not, you should be addressed as such on television, on a broadcast, as Councilwoman Davila, as Maritza at, at worst case. But, for, you know, for somebody to be so disrespectful, mommy, or whatever, you know, um, derogatory, um, terms to be utilized, it disrespects this council, this dais, it also disrespects the work that we must get done. You know, everyone has the opportunity to have their, their, uh, opinions and perspectives, but, the, the, the measure of disrespect is unsatisfactory, I won't tolerate it. And I'm, and I'm, uh, I'm happy to see that you, you dealt with matters swiftly and firmly, but, there's a, there's a, a process through Robert's Rules of Order, but there's also a measure of respect that should not be negated. Coming in here with that nonsense is foolishness, and, you know, some people believe that, you know, they just have the ability, or, or, uh, uh, the, the, the leverage or vertical movement to be able to do certain things and not have to pay a price for it, but, you know, that's unacceptable, and, and I'm hoping, you know, even as the Council President, that you acknowledge that and stifle that, 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 uh, that attitude, because we can't, we can't tolerate that. You know, there's a lot of different things that's going on, being disrespectful, but that right there on the na- on the broadcast, we are already in the national spotlight. The news is here watching us, you know, never mind the fact that people don't even understand the, the language properly, but now, to, to, to take it to that next level of disrespect and bring the street element into the, the council chambers, is unaccept- is unacceptable. So, please acknowledge that.
Council President.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Jackson, Councilman Velez.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'm not here to discuss, uh, or challenge anybody's expertise in, in, in the way they conduct themselves, or whatever, but, some people use this platform just to bully other council members and try to address, uh, other things that not even relevant to what we're talking about. I made it clear when I was doing my statement for the vote, that it was my view, that how the money should be spent. That's why I brought what I brought today. This is not reflecting the director responsibility of what he have to do or not to do with his department. I believe he got a good communication with the BA, I think he got a good communication with the, uh, administration, and they will know the needs of DPW. What I was saying is, and I'm going to continue saying is, that if we put this twenty-four thousand, and it was twenty-seven, and I embraced the administration from twenty-seven to twenty-four, they, they will put it to the, uh, a department that works hard out there, where our parks, that money for those equipment, of course, they could utilize more equipment for, for the purpose they would have used the money. In my case, I don't need a tablet, and I say it, I use my phone, and I use, I utilize my, my.
Councilman Velez.
My office a lot, but, that's, that's the way they feel, so.
Councilman Velez.
Yes.
You started this conversation again, see, and, I have to.
Clear it out, clear it out.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Councilman Rivera.
I just want to make clear to the viewers at home, we did not specify which tablets we needed. We let our IT department decide which is the tablets that will better serve us here at the council. I, I just want to make that clear. Second of all, you know, I just, every meeting, I gotta bring this up, because one of my colleagues just don't give up, try to make us, you know, look bad, stating that, basically, his comments that there's a lot of wasteful spending here, based on the comments, you know, giving a list of equipment that we could buy for DPW. Well, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you some reality, and I didn't want to do this, but I'm gonna have to, because, you know, people need to know what is going on. First of all, DPW have their own budget for small-ticket items, such as the list that he provided, those are considered small-ticket items. We also, and the BA is here, the, this council here, knowing the needs of DPW, and how a lot of the services are not being provided, because some equipment is being stated over and over, that some of the equipment, uh, is not available to DPW. We ask every department, we ask the BA and the administration to ask every department to provide us with a capital plan for those big-ticket items. Every department produce a capital plan, except DPW. Fire Department came here, put their wish list together. DPW did not do so. So, although that, you know, it sounds good on the mic, everything you're saying, reality is, is that we cannot micromanage, we cannot do the job of the council, and at the same time, be DPW directors. We had these conversations many times, over and over with DPW, and I feel a little uncomfortable that I have to repeat myself again, but when you're saying, passing these comments, where a lot of viewers are watching, I think it's very disrespe- very, uh, very irresponsible of yourself. When you were sitting here, and we have budget hearings, and we drill, not drill, but we interrogated the administration and asked why DPW did not submit a capital plan. And we have done so even in, 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 in other private meetings. And for you to come here and say that we're not, you know, that we could have used this twenty-something thousand dollars to buy, you know, lawnmower, like, I don't even know what you had, but it was small-ticket items. I, I just want to clarify that to the public, you know, let's not send the wrong message to the public.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, Councilman Rivera.
Madam President, one, one other clarification, I, I hear what Councilman Rivera is saying, and I think what happened, Councilman, DPW accomplished some of their capital needs through their operating budget. So, they, they did come to the table with some things that they wanted to do, and, and some big equipment and ticket items, so, uh, what you're saying is, is accurate in terms that they didn't come to the table with a capital plan, but they did make some big-ticket purchases through their operating budget.
Council President.
Councilman Rivera.
I concur with you, there, there's some sweepers that, that was leased, but they have a big need, because they have not have a plan to replace a lot of their equipment. So, their responsibility was for them to submit a thorough plan, and let us decide what we're gonna fund, right? Or, let you, first of all, you, you, you're the one who decide what we're gonna get for them this year, next year, it's a six-year capital plan. Uh, and, and based on past plans, I haven't seen any, any plans for DPW in the past years, and we could see the results.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Councilman Rivera, all right. So, council members, we have a few items left, all right? Uh, I believe we have item number nine, I think this is just title only, correct?
Sorry, Madam President, just a public hearing, to open the public hearing, and if anyone wishes to speak, and then we close, there will be no formal action. Just a public hearing, and what was approved.
So, is a public hearing for item number nine?
Yes.
Sure, all right. So, at this time, um, I'm opening up the public hearing on item number nine. Can you read into the record?
I'll just read into the record, it was resolution authorizing the reading of the fiscal year 2019 municipal budget by title only, and introduction of the fiscal year 2019 municipal budget, and this was approved at the special meeting held on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and tonight, we'll have the public hearing, if the public wishes to speak, so, we, if there's no one, then we close the public hearing.
Do I have anyone, uh, in the public that would like to speak on item number nine?
Is that gentleman over there, he's, no?
Commissioner? Okay.
Seeing none, move to close.
Okay, move, move to close the, uh, public hearing on item number nine, by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Jackson, roll call to close the public hearing on item number nine.
Yes, thank you. Roll call to close the public hearing, item number nine, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Mims. Councilman Rivera. Councilman Velez. There will be no formal action, will be taken, it's just opening the public hearing and closing the public hearing.
Yes.
After we approved it at that meeting, we had to publish it, and twenty-eight days after, the public has all.
Yes.
Yeah, right, both of you, yes, thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against, the public hearing, item number nine is hereby closed.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
No mic signs?
No mic? All right, oh, God. What do we have left? We have thirty-two, thirty-three.
Thirty-two, yes.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-five. Thirty-six A and B.
Thirty-six A and thirty-six B.
And that's it, right?
And that's it, yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Why don't we take items thirty-six A and B?
It should be thirty-six. I think it's just, I think they just have it as thirty-six.
It just says thirty-six. Is it on the side? Can you check on? Okay, so, why don't we, okay, since we're going to discuss for the record, Madam Clerk, please read into the record.
Sorry, the six.
Item thirty-six A and thirty-six B, and then I'm gonna have Corporation Counsel, um, speak on both of those items.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Next item is our item number thirty-six, a resolution authorizing award of contract for labor council for the city of Palestine, RFP number twenty nineteen point oh-one point one, law resolution nineteen zero-two-seven. Thirty-six B, resolution authorizing award of contract for general litigation and worker compensation through claims resolution corporation, Inc., the city's third-party insurance administration, via RFP twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen dash oh-three oh-one, and RFP twenty nineteen dash oh-four point one, administration, resolution. Sorry, Council President. Thirty-six. That's resolution, um, nineteen, fear a two-nine. Is there a motion on the floor, in a second? Sophia, did I give it to them? Give her another copy. Sophia has an additional copy, she'll give it to you, ma'am, Council President, Councilwoman. Is there a motion for thirty-six A and thirty-six B? Mister President, um, Councilman McCoy moved, and Councilwoman Mims, second. All right.
That's the extension, because they were doing, they were doing work before. So, they're still extended, but they're not on the list moving forward. They're not on the list.
Okay, yeah. Yes, there it is, nope.
Yes, it should be attached. Thirty-six B. There are two, there's thirty-six, and there's thirty-six B. Thirty-six, thirty-six has an attachment, thirty-six B does not.
Thirty-six B has twenty-five.
Do you have the attachment?
My question was, is these the only five firms that apply?
But, on thirty-six isn't five fir- five firms.
All these are thirty-six B.
On, but they.
Thirty-six is five.
I'm, I apologize, I'm sorry, Councilman, thirty-six B, yes, thirty-six, no, they were not the only five firms that applied.
You picked those five.
Correct, we scored them and picked them.
But, I thought they were gonna like.
They're doing, they're doing like thirty-six B.
Oh, that's what we work with.
Okay. I'm not sure, would you like me to discuss, or?
Yes.
Where's our Council President?
Which one, which one we're working on, thirty-six B?
Thirty, I'm gonna go order thirty-six and then thirty-six.
Council President, which Council President?
Twenty-five, okay.
Discussion?
Madam President, if I may, there's a motion on the floor by Councilman McCoy, and there's a second by Councilwoman Mims, just for the record. Thirty-six A and thirty-six B, so, we have a motion on the floor. Councilman Mims, I think, ma'am. Yes.
Corporation Counsel, just give me, give us some details.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll do them in order. Resolution number thirty-six, um, well, let me start by saying, there are two resolutions, um, because previously, all the attorneys would be listed on one resolution, and it did not delineate what each attorney did, so, it would just be one resolution awarding everybody contracts, and you weren't really clear as to who was doing labor, who was doing litigation, um, taxes, et cetera. So, I've separated them, and moving forward, that is the way that they will appear. So, number thirty-six is a resolution authorizing for labor council. If I recall, I believe we had about, uh, maybe eleven, um, firms apply. Um, I, as you know, this is an account, um, that comes out of my, um, my budget line, so we have to be budget mindful. So, my team and I scored them, and determined that the five that are listed, um, in the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, um, to be the people that we felt would be, uh, most appropriate to handle, um, the myriad of labor issues that we've been confronted with and have been in the past. We have contracts, negotiations that are coming up, um, as you know, we have other issues, other litigation, and, and, um, um, a little, a little more in-depth litigation matters that we're dealing with, as well as your typical employment issues. So, this, um, resolution seeks to award, um, contracts to the firms, the five firms listed in the fifth whereas. Are, are there any questions as to, uh, resolution thirty-six? If not, I'll move on to thirty-six B.
So, council members, just so you know, uh, Corporation Counsel did, uh, come to us in finance, um, and I do know that she did, I, I know I requested Councilman, um, our Chair of Finance, also Councilman Rivera, and she did submit, um, the information to us last week on Friday, uh, through email, uh, and today, you know, there was a little, this is why, if you see it, we had to kind of vote it in, uh, there was a miscommunication, but, um, I do like the fact that you did separate them, it gives us, it's more clear to us, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm one, I, I like the cap, okay? And, and I think that it is important that if you have to come back, to come back to the council to let us know that it needs to be increased and why, right? Um, and I know that was something that Councilman Rivera in, in Finance did say, right, Councilman? Okay, um, the other thing also is, uh, I'm happy also to know that there's also others that, you know, that, after you did your vetting, uh, uh, they were not added to the new list, so, I'm happy to see that. And I think there was one other thing, um, I read something, I'm trying to figure out which one, uh, that it says that the BA has all authority to extend, whi- which, there, there was one, hold on, I don't have it. I just want to make sure that, once this is approved, okay? And, and I understand, because I said, I think you added also a list that there are potentials, right? That we could call upon, not necessarily that they would be.
Correct, and, and that actually applies to both thirty-six and thirty-six B. Although there are five law firms that we've scored, and we are awarding, you are authorizing me the ability to, to give them work, they are, we may or may not use them, um, but, and just so that you know, I think it's only fair to put this out, these not-to-exceeds are relatively minimal, and I do that for two reasons, one, to make sure the law firms are responsible in the way that they bill us, and instead of seeing some large number, they see a number to make them mindful that they need to be, um, responsible in their billing, but also, um, to give both myself and the council a little more control, so that before things get too deep, we have a chance to look at, to look at the, the matters and make a determination if we want to continue to pursue, if settling makes, you know, more financial sense. So, I only share that because it is possible that I will be coming asking for more money, um, because I do start small, and I'd rather start smaller and come back than start with this large number that I think some law firms think, well, if they started with that number, we need to use all of it.
Okay, um, we're good. Everyone's okay, council members?
I have a question.
Councilman Abdelaziz, then Councilwoman Mims.
This is more just, since I'm new to the council, and looking at some of the prices, outside legal counsel, how many full-time lawyers does your department have?
Uh, I believe, well, that work in-house, because some do prosecutor.
Yeah, even with prosecutor, full-time, that's under your, that full-time lawyers are under your department?
I believe eleven, but I'm not sure off the top, is it eleven? Yes, I, I recall, you asked the list.
Eleven lawyers, and out of these eleven lawyers, when you go outside litigation, when do you decide not to use in-house?
Um, for most of our outside litig- for most of the matters that, um, that are, that require heavy court, heavy discovery, we generally use outside counsel, because in-house counsel would, they're not equipped for that, for this level of, of, um, defense. Not from a professional standard, but just in order to maintain their, their workload here, which is drafting of the resolutions, review of, of contracts, that they really just don't have the wherewithal or the, or the bandwidth to handle that level of work. the wherewithal or the bandwidth to handle that level of work.
And just from a legal standpoint, in your department, do you think it would be more cost-effective to hire a lawyer that has that expertise and bring him in-house?
I would say realistically, there are law firms who represent municipalities, and they generally have a team of attorneys. I mean, they generally hire people at salaries of somewhere between, you know, a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per person, and they usually have at least five to six people. So I think that, what I will say is, the amount of money that we budget for this, I think.
What is that number, for outside legal counsel?
Let's see, I don't.
I mean, on this, I know, in the average year, you think, how much?
About seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred for outside legal counsel?
Correct.
All right. Madam President, I'm just gonna put a request, and I'm done, if I can. Could I get the salary breakdowns of your eleven lawyers, and their, are they unionized?
They are.
Could I get their contract sent to me? Just, yeah, just, I just, and because I want to see how we could consolidate, and if we have, that's a lot of lawyers in-house. I don't know what other big cities.
None of, I can speak to you from professional knowledge, there is, there are no big cities who handle these types of matters in-house.
No, 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 I'm not saying that they handle these in-house. I know some cities that have no, they have a corporation counsel, and then they go out to bid for prosecutor service.
Correct.
They go out for, and maybe, you know, because I'm sure we're paying these lawyers benefits, and we're, these are things I just want to know, if we could handle some things in-house, or look away, I don't know, I mean, you're in East Orange, was there, did their law department have eleven lawyers?
No, but I would say that we had at that time.
I would think the more lawyers we have.
There were nine, and six were in-house, full-time, and the other three were prosecutors. And in East Orange, these type of services were handled by outside counsel.
If you could just get me that request, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Cotton, and then I take roll call, please, it's almost eleven fifteen. I really want to finish this meeting before twelve.
Thank you, Madam Council President. My question was, and you said that in Finance, you had the, you could see how the five firms that they picked, which we didn't, weren't able to see that, or what they, how they scored them, which I thought that they were gonna put that with the packet. But I know that Corporation Counsel separated, separated the law firms from labor matters to workers' comp and the other ones. Now, I just have a question with one of the firms on here, to me, I don't think he's that great. I shouldn't say he, but it's just a whole bunch of he's in here. But, and then I see new ones, so you're saying, in Finance, y'all had the privilege of seeing how they scored it and everything, and how they picked it.
I never said that, Councilwoman.
Oh, you didn't say that?
That's not what I said.
Okay.
So.
The scoring is done by the professionals, the Corporation Counsel.
Right, eleven firms, she said eleven firms apply.
Correct, if I recall correctly, I can get you the exact number. And we scored all of the firms.
Right.
And we picked the top five for labor, and for thirty-six B, we qualified all of the firms that applied to handle general litigation and workers' compensation. It doesn't mean that they all have to be used, but based on the way that many of them scored, and knowing some of their expertise, we thought it would be better to have a larger array of attorneys to choose from, to deal with the plethora of, and the breadth of litigation matters that we handle.
Right. Now, okay, and I'm almost finished, but see, on this twenty-five that you have, I only see one, I only see one from number thirty-six that's on this twenty-five, so I guess that one firm can do all three.
You, I'm sorry, you see one?
Right.
You see one that's on both?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, but I only see one.
They submitted for both of them, and are capable of handling both litigation and labor matters. Based on some of the matters that that specific attorney handles, they just sort of crossed paths between litigation and labor, the usual litigation that are related to certain labor issues.
Right, okay, then you answer.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Cotton, roll call, Madam?
It's Madam President. Roll call on item number thirty-six A and thirty-six B for approval, Councilman.
We're doing both together?
Yeah, I read them together earlier. And I had a motion, and a second.
We had a, we had a motion.
Yes, we had a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second.
On both. Yes, okay. Roll call on items thirty-eight, thirty-six A and thirty-six B, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On number thirty-six, I'm gonna say a no, and number thirty-six B, I'll say a yeah.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we're gonna need to be mindful about a few things, and I definitely understand the sentiments of Councilman Abdelaziz. Just want to, for a point of clarity, and I know I don't have to express it to you, but these outside counsel firms that we're hiring, they have a plethora of other resources available that our Corporation Counsel in her office may not necessarily have. They have prior legals, they have, you know, a number of different people that may be helping to do the research, when our lawyers and attorneys are doing that research for us. So it's a bit extensive for us to expect them to go out and be able to handle case loads like this, where they have to do a great deal of research. But I also want to make a note of the phenomenal job that our Corporation Counsel has been doing thus far, and I want to be able to extend that vote of confidence to her, and allowing her the leeway to select and choose moving forward for this year. And we can, you know, have that evaluation move later on down the line, if necessary, but I definitely want to, you know, give her a vote of confidence in what she believes is best for her department and for the city. So, Madam Clerk, at this moment, my vote would be yes.
Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
I want to echo the compliments, the comments of Councilman Jackson. I think it's worthy to be, to be highlighted with respect to the presentation. These matters used to be bundled together. They're being separated, we're now being able to identify specific attorneys that are handling those particular matters in those areas. And I must say that I'm very appreciative of the services that's been offered by the Corporation Counsel, in being frank and very direct in response to council questions. And I'm very happy with the way the process is working. And she certainly has my full vote of confidence in these matters. So my vote is yes on both thirty-six A and B. Look forward to that continued effort as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you, I just want to say thank you so much for your efficiency, your excellence, and the great leadership you've brought since you've been here to the City of Patterson. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera?
Before our vote, to Councilman Abdelaziz's point, I just ask the administration, given that, you know, you guys just started this year, to do an analysis of that department, because your salary line for that depart, for your department is one point three million dollars. When you take into account also the fringe benefits for all those, you know, lawyers, you could get up there, close to, I would say, two million, close to two million, when you take everything into account. So all we ask you to do is do the responsible thing, and, you know, and look, look at those things, those areas. You have inherited a lot of the employees that are there, and in difficult times, like the ones we have now, where we have financial difficulties, all we ask the council, we ask the administration to do is, you know, to look into every department, to assess if what you have there is what you need. And also, I concur with Councilman McCoy and Jackson, you know, when we, when we receive everything we're asking for, when we ask a lot of, you know, a lot of questions, is because we're not trying to scrutinize, but we are scrutinizing, you know, everything you're submitting, but the intent is not to vote no. We just try to work together here, and if we got elected to make responsible decisions, I have to feel a hundred percent, you know, before a vote, and with these resolutions, I feel a hundred percent, so my vote is yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Velez, we are voting on items thirty-six A and thirty-six B.
Yes.
Your vote is yes on both, thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote on item number thirty-six A is eight in favor, one against. Item number thirty-six B, nine in favor, none against, both items thirty-six A and thirty-six B hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-four?
Next item is item number thirty-four. Item number thirty-four reads, "Resolution authorized in state fiscal year 2019, emergency temporary appropriations, February 2019. In addition, additionally for January 2019, Finance Resolution 1902-5."
Move.
To have a motion, second?
Moved by?
A second.
Moved by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Rivera. Roll call on item number thirty-four.
Roll call on item number thirty-four, and Council President and Honorable Council Members, this resolution needs six affirmative votes. Roll call on item number thirty-four, Councilman Abdelaziz. Councilwoman Cotton? Thirty-four.
What percentage are we at now, Marge, please?
So this brings us to about, it's just under sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six?
Mm-hmm.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
One quick question before our vote. I want to ask the CFO a question, Marge, when can we anticipate a budget be presented to us for adoption? More or less, because now we have the state aid numbers, more or less. When can we anticipate a budget to, because, you know, we're gonna continue doing this temporary appropriations, because we have to by law, but the question that Councilwoman Cotton asked is relevant, you know, what percentage are we at right now, which is sixty-six percent? But don't forget, we have a temporary budget based on last year's budget. So I just need to know, when, you know, when we, when can we anticipate the administration presenting a budget to us for adoption?
So as you're aware, one of the, one of the contingencies with the transitional aid this year is still open. We had two contingencies, one was to move the city employees and retirees into the state health benefit program. We accomplished that. The second contingency is for sewer rate, sewer fee increase, and that would provide us with an additional two million dollars. So we spoke briefly tonight in the Finance Committee meeting. We're going to have another Finance Committee meeting in a couple of weeks, presenting to the entire council at the February 5th workshop for that discussion, and how it all plays into this contingency plan of the state for this additional sum of money, two million dollars. So probably at the earliest, we would be able to realistically adopt the budget is in mid to late March.
March.
Correct. It takes two readings of in ordnance to be effective. I believe we have to go to the local finance board in March for conversion if we're going to move to a sewer utility. So there's.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. So those are the items that are going to delay, but mainly it's the contingency with the sewer.
So if we don't accomplish everything that we're planning to accomplish, we only have three months to take any action on, you know, adjusting the numbers in this budget. I'm just afraid that, and I don't want to put panic in people's, you know, fear in the public, but if we don't, if we don't do everything that we have planned to do as an administration, we could see a tax increase. That's the only way out, I just don't see another way out. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't vote on that, you know, we're in the middle of roll call, let me not prolong this, I'll vote, and then we can have a conversation later. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
I don't know if you say conversation later and today? Okay, so, because we don't know, we're gonna have that conversation after the vote. Before, before I vote, I know we're receiving thirty-three million from the state for 2019?
We are receiving twenty-nine million from the state for fiscal nineteen, an additional two million dollars for the conversions of the state health benefit plan, and an additional two million dollars, bringing the total to thirty-three million, if the council approves a sewer fee.
Okay, so, and we are banking already five point five million now, is that correct? From the sale of the armory and two point five from the tax sale? We already banking from that?
That's not five million dollars, that was about three and a half million altogether, four million.
No, it was, we was expecting one point five million, but we sold two point five million. And if we sold the armor for three million, it's five point five million.
One second.
So, and if you look into that, so we already banking five point five million, if I'm correct on that, three million for the armory and two point five for the tax lien sale, then we are in thirty-eight million, so we only had to get two million for the next, for the next fiscal year?
No.
We would go to that original number of forty million.
So forty million, we're getting potentially thirty-three million, which gives us a gap of seven million dollars. I had realized some additional monies in the lien sale, close to seven hundred thousand dollars net. So that brings our gap down a little bit closer to six million.
So what happened with the two point five million they said they sold?
Well, that's, whatever was anticipated, we anticipated that in the introduced budget, the proceeds of sale for the armory and the parking authority.
It was anticipated one point five million. That's what, that's what we were talking about, and the three million dollars of the armory. So let's put one point five million, and then the three million, it would be four point five million, but we sold two point five million in the tax sale. So if I'm correct, that would be five point five.
The sale of the city property, which is the armory and the Patterson Parking Authority property lots, was anticipated in the budget at three million six hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay.
That's already factored in to what we have now as the gap, the net gap of seven million, six point three million.
So we expected to get what, seven million? We expect to adjust the budget up to seven million dollars?
Up to six point three million.
Beside the statement of Councilman Rivera saying that we probably gonna get hit with taxes, you didn't strike that, but are we expecting layoff? No, I know, you said about.
A potential layoff is on the table for discussion, we're going through those calculations currently.
All right. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against, item number thirty-four is hereby adopted.
Very good. Item number thirty-five?
Next item is item number thirty-five. Item number thirty-five reads, "Resolution authorized in acceptance of bids for the sale by assignment of certificates of tax sale, including any subsequent municipal liens, pursuant to NJSA 54 colon 5 dash 114.2B, Finance Resolution 1902-6."
So move.
Second? Moved by Councilman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call on item number thirty-five.
Roll call on item number thirty-five for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy? Councilman McCoy, thirty-five, number thirty-five?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims? Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is eight.
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number 35 is hereby adopted.
Does somebody have their phone open? I hear feedback. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. All right, uh, council members, we have, oh, we have two more items, right?
Yes, two.
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
Thirty-two and thirty-three, yes.
Item number 32?
Next item is item number 32. Resolution setting the grace period for payment of third quarter of fiscal year 2019, first quarter of calendar year 2019, Finance Resolution 1902-3.
Motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilman Abdelaziz. Roll call on item number 32.
Roll call on item number 32 for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you. Um, Council President, Marge, when will, uh, when will they be going out?
The tax bills are planned for production and mailing by February 19th, Tuesday.
They're going to be mailed?
Yes.
Uh, and then they'll, and then they have 25 days after that?
Correct.
Okay. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 32 is hereby adopted.
Item number 33?
Item number 33. Resolution to authorize issuance of estimated tax bills for the first quarter of calendar year 2019, corresponding to the third quarter of fiscal year 2019, Finance Resolution 1902-4.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item number 33.
Roll call on item number 33 for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Um, uh, I'm sorry, Council President, Marge, would it be the same rate?
It's, uh, the same levies that are-
I mean, the same levy?
Yes, same levy, no change.
It's the same levy. Uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Rivera?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
What is the number of the levy?
If you see in the resolution, under paragraph number two, the total levy is 250,582,881.21. The municipal levy within that sum is 156,185,768.44.
My vote is yes. See this, so follow her, yes.
Your vote is yes, Councilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number 33 is hereby adopted. There are no more items on the regular meeting agenda?
Move to close.
Have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you very much, council members. Uh, move to close by Councilman Abdelaziz, second by Councilman Jackson. Roll call to close the regular meeting.
Roll call to close the regular meeting of January 15, 2019. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Uh, Al, please. Um, I just wanted to let my constituents know, uh, on Jan- January the 22nd, um, we're having a meeting at New Bethel Church on 2 Auburn Street at 5:30. I need to start my Martha Luther King Foundation, Martha Luther King, um, Park, um, nonprofit status in order we can raise money to finish Martha Luther King Park on 2 Auburn Street, which is on the corner of Governor and Auburn Street. So, if you could come out next Tuesday, the 22nd, at 5:30 at New Bethel Church, um, please join us if you can. And I would like for everyone that want to be on the committee to please be on the committee. Uh, my vote is yes. I want everyone out there to have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll try to be very brief. Um, through the chair, Mr. BA, I'm hoping that the administration has heard and understood the cries of the community. I know I don't have to explain it to you, um, or anyone on this administration being part of the community. I'm just, um, I'm hopeful that, um, uh, we don't anticipate issues whether they are not. Um, I understand that the, uh, there may, there may have been some frustration from the people, but considering the circumstances, that frustration should be understood and, um, and, uh, not necessarily welcomed, but, uh, you know, understood. I'm hopeful that the barricades in front of this building could be removed, as if this is not, we, we've yet to see any conditions in this community that mirrored anything, um, you know, in, in a third ward world country, or so to speak. And I, I just think it's unnecessary, and I think that it, it, it sends the wrong message, and also antagonizes the people to feel as if they are unwelcome. I had a young lady text me this evening that that she was being told, um, downstairs that there was, there was no, um, no one else being allowed to come in. It's, it's a public meeting, as we all know. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that all of the public, including the family, feels welcome. Also, lastly, uh, Ms. Sarah Billy, uh, I'm hoping that all of you keep her in, in your prayers. She's, um, she's dealing with some difficult times, and, and I'm hoping maybe we can have a conversation, but she's dealing with some, uh, issues with the, uh, uh, the home healthy services. And I know it doesn't fall into the city's purview, but I think that we should have, you know, some type of, um, uh, some type of process to make sure that our residents who are in those conditions are receiving, you know, care and, and, and figure out what we can do to help, you know, move that forward. I don't know if that can go to Dr. Pissard or something of that nature, but, um, anyway, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, Mr. BA, uh, maybe our Chairman of TPW will, uh, explain it to you, uh, later on. On our TPW committee meeting, we asked some, uh, information to be provided to the council, uh, on behalf of TPW. For example, uh, Table of Organization and some other stuff. Uh, hopefully we'll, uh, we'll get that, uh, by next week. That's my request and, uh, my voice, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCoy?
Thank you, um, corporate, um, Madam Clerk, um, Council President and Council Members. Um, let me, let me say that, um, I want to echo the sentiment of, um, of Councilman Jackson tonight with regards to, um, the, the people's house and access and the, um, persons, um, being, um, escorted out of City Hall today, as well as those that have been able to come in. Now, I understand fire code and capacity, but I've seen these chambers, along with a balcony, being, um, full with people at different functions, um, in City Hall, and, and that has never been a problem. Um, so, I hope, I'm hopeful that going forward, we'll be more mindful that we can, um, better serve if we have full access to the community and they have access to us, so we can talk with them and address their concerns. And I think no one would disagree with the fact that there were some legitimate questions being asked. I want to commend the, um, Laurie family, um, mom and dad, um, the other mothers that came this evening for the way they conducted themselves, albeit in, in a very difficult and stressful time. Um, while they were mourning the loss, they yet stood up and asked the questions that every mother should ask. Um, the question last meeting was, what would you do if that was your son or your daughter? And I think that was, uh, that was appropriate, was prudent. Um, I've said it before then, and I, I continue to say now and join with those of the community that suggest that we should have yielded to the Attorney General to oversight, um, this matter. I think it would have gone a long way in addressing the public's concern, and it would have shown a level of, um, accountability and transparency that would be, um, helpful in this, in this case. Um, so, I, I want to, I want to underscore that. I, I also want to, um, say that I'm going to ask the Public Safety Committee, uh, to meet with the Director of Police and the Chief and review some of the video that has been put out on, on Facebook. I, I saw one in particular where mace was being deployed by an officer in front of 111. And I'm not too sure, um, if that was being de- deployed according to, uh, policy and procedure and, and the need, a necessity for it. Um, I saw a lady with, um, what appears to be a lady in the video, uh, walking with some bags on Broadway. Didn't appear to be a part of the demonstration, although she could have been. And, um, she was inadvertently, um, maced by an officer that was attempting to mace someone who was moving away from the building. Um, and so, I, I'd like procedures to be reviewed. I think, um, Councilmen remind us to be a little bit sensitive as to how folks mourn, and, um, their free speech and their free right to, to demonstrate. And, um, I would want us to look at that. Um, even as we go through this process, um, we ought to look at that. And I think there were a number of folks at the podium that raised some concerns with how it is that we handle that situation. And albeit that we're in a very sensitive time, I think it's prudent for us to look at that in committee, um, with the in charge, so that going forward, we can avoid those instance, incidents. Like to remind, um, the Third Ward resident, also all the residents of City of Patterson, that the ceasefire organization will be doing a listening, continuing their listening tour in the Third Ward at school number 26, which is at 1 East 32nd Street, right off of 11th Avenue, um, on next Thursday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM. And we're inviting you to come on out, light refreshments. The refreshments will be served, it says. And for additional information, you could call the ceasefire coordinator at 862-262-3642. So that's next Thursday. Um, we invite you to come on out, listen to the plans, uh, we can effectively provide policing, uh, in the City of Patterson. The mayor will be in present, police director, as well as the, um, chief or chief representative will be present at that meeting. Let me, um, conclude by, by saying, um, as a, as a parent and the father of two sons, I said it last meeting, uh, it doesn't escape me the gravity of the circumstances that have occurred. Um, I think Councilman Velez had mentioned it before. You had a young man that was in the care, uh, between the police department, being transported by fire department EMT, being delivered to, uh, hospital, all centers of care. Um, and is no longer with us. We have a obligation to be able to speak to this family and this community, to reassure them, um, that we have done everything in the utmost to provide the best care, uh, for their loved ones, and, um, and that's our obligation. I think it's, uh, it's a, it's the minimum we could do, um, in these circumstances. And so, in everything that we're doing going forward, um, ask the mayor to think of it in that way, and to call on every resources that we have to provide those answers and do it in a timely, um, fashion. I think this process is, as much as it seemed to have gone fast, is somewhat elongated. Um, and I think we could do better in communicating in a more effective way what it is, uh, our policy, what is our process, and, and how it is that we treat cases of these, um, emergency medical conditions or medical need. I want to thank you, Madam President, for allowing me these few minutes. Um, good night, everyone, and, uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mims?
Good evening, Patterson. First of all, let me, um, just thank Pastor Jerry Wilder from Grace and Restoration Fellowship for coming out tonight. I also want to acknowledge all of our students. Brianna McKinley, Aiden Booker, who is the highest park scorer in the entire district that was here on tonight, Imran Ahmed, Sarah Ahmed, Rolando Rodriguez, David Rodriguez, Gabriella Rodriguez, Cameron Davis, Alexa Davis, Kiara Williams, and Ms. Loris Young for coming out on tonight and doing the dance performance. I want to say happy 90th birthday to our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who had a quote that says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." It's already been stated by, uh, a few council, um, people on tonight, but we have to make sure that even if we don't understand, that we have to come to terms and understand that there are five stages of grief. And then when people are grieving and they're going through these, these, um, times, we have to be able to understand, even if it's not a full knowledge, at least be empathetic to these families. Um, so it's already been stated, reiterated, and stated again. I think we need to, um, just, um, Mr. BA, if you can communicate that to our mayor, um, there needs to be some type of conversation to allow, um, some empathetic moments for these families that are grieving, and still not at a place where we've provided answers. Um, and so we have to make sure that we ensure them that, you know, you're doing what you need to do to get those answers to the family, but we have to make sure that we treat them with a level of compassion and care, as well as not just the family. My heart goes out to Ms. Patrice King, um, and to the father, to the brothers, sisters, and all the family members, and to the other families of our mayor, I think it's Alessandra who were here on tonight, to any other family that's been affected that we still don't have resolved. But we have to make sure that, um, we as a, we as a community, when one hurt, we all hurt. So it's not just one individual, but as a single mom, my heart just goes out to this family. Um, I want to talk about the funeral arrangements for Jamique Laurie. The funeral will be this Friday, January 18th, at Canaan Baptist Church, 535 East St. Team Street. The viewing is from 10:00 AM to 12:00, and the funeral is at 12:00, and the burial will be at St. Peter's in Garfield. Let me repeat that. The funeral for, um, Jamique Mikey Laurie will be this Friday, January 18th, at Canaan Baptist Church, 535 East St. Team Street in Patterson. The viewing is from 10:00 AM to 12:00, and the funeral service is at 12:00, and the burial will be at St. Peter's, and there will be a repast at Masonic Temple. We have a meeting on tomorrow night, a planning meeting, a planning meeting on tomorrow night. Um, Canaan is on 11th Ave, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Canaan is on 11th Ave. Canaan Baptist Church is on 11th Ave. Um, Masonic Temple will be the repast. We have a planning meeting on tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Jump Start, um, location off of Chamberlain Avenue. Anyone would like to donate food, anyone would like to participate to, um, help this family out, please reach out to Ms. Jamie Bland, or you're welcome to come to the planning committee meeting on tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. But the funeral is this Friday, um, at Canaan Baptist on 11th Ave, from 10 to 12:00 in the morning, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And the funeral is immediately following, and then, um, Masonic Temple will be the repast. Let's continue to pray for the Laurie and the King family. Um, it's such a tragic and a sad situation, but I am continually, continually requesting that this family gets some resolve, they get some answers, um, and no more through social media, no more presumptions, and no more opinions. This family deserves to get answers, um, as well as other families. So let's do, uh, what's right to do for this family and any other family that gets impacted, um, by such a serious- by such a serious situation, thank you so much, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera?
Keep it very brief, I just hope it means a resolution to what's going on, you know, we are going through tough times as a city, but I just want to let the residents know that we know as much as they do when it comes to this, they're going through an investigation, so it's not like we're remaining, you know, silent about the issue, we just, you know, we haven't been informed about anything, and I just hope that the answers that people, you know, have brought before us, get answered, and, you know, all those questions that have come up, so as soon as that, that gets done, I just, you know, I just hope that, that we just can move on as a city, and my answer is yes, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, before, before we leave tonight, Madam, through the chair to Marge, Sheet Ten D, I note that you submitted this budget way before, way before the tax lien sale, okay, and you was anticipating one point five million dollars, and the news articles, and everybody out there say they used to overpass that sale, that you sell two point five. So there's one million dollars missing from here, so if it's updated, when you go to present the budget, should be, if, if, if it's accurate, what they saying in the news that they sell two, one million more, so it's not here, because this was done way before the tax filing, that's why I was doing the five point five million, et cetera, et cetera. So, if that could be updated, then we could count that money to low down the budget of the act.
So, Councilman, that will be part of the budget amendments that come later in the year closer to the adoption date.
Correct, you know, we go into tough moments in our city, and everybody has saying the same thing, and I don't want to repeat myself on that, but I know what is losing a child, even a lot of people say it was my stepson, but it was my child, I got him from when he was real young, and it's hard to wait for prosecutor report, it's hard to wait for investigation, it's hard, I'm still waiting for those reports, even that it's not the same course or the same way to, to death, but yes, it's hard to wait for, and sit back and say, wait for them, it's hard, I know, my wife is still grieving, I'm still grieving, it's, it's not easy to call the prosecutor's office, even I'm an elected official, they don't give me the right to call them every time and get the information I want. One thing I did is that I called the prosecutor's office myself, to St. County, and requested that they should have a courtesy with the family and give them a prosecutor's conference, and guide them step by step, what they gonna see, what they gonna expect, and what would be their options, and I don't think that's a lot to ask if the prosecutor's office would do that, and between this situation, we are Patterson, police are police, but whoever had to step up and clear with statements and everything to prosecutor's office, and try to bring some relief to this family, and to all of us, because we all on this. And my heart goes to the family, we working close, we already, Madam Councilwoman Lisa Mims, I had a meeting with the uncle today, and we doing a donation of sodas and water delivered to Masonic, and other things that we are working, me and Councilwoman will be kind for just, you know, let you know, but we still have to pray, and, and hopefully this come with the right answers to the right people, and that never is gonna bring back this young man, any answer, any report, it's not gonna bring the young man back, so I know how the family feel, but they have to be persistent, patient, I know it's hard when it's grieving, I get the right answers, I know how it is, so, my heart go to, and also my heart goes to the family of Moisés Pinar, he's close relative of my kids, at the loss of Elvis and, you know, my heart goes to their family too, that they are grieving. Last but not least, the St. County Department of Health has sent me an email to please announce that you cannot see, smell, taste random gas in your property, it's the second leading cause of lung cancer. Test your home today, St. County is giving out free random test kits, call the St. County Department of Health to get yours today, this will make the necessary, this kit will be the necessary step to test your house if any outside gas through the soil, through the water, through pipes, through any kind of structure you got on your house, if there's any gas going into your house that will lead to other poison in your, in your body, if you need that, that kit is free, call nine-seven-three-eight-eight-one-four-three-nine-six. And last but not least, and I just gotta say this, you know, sometimes we say things and I don't regret what I say, we in the business that we have to be accountable what we say and what we do, my, my form must be is not a way to, in no fashion disrespect no one, even that I have received threat, harassment, bullying, and I don't take it in a high-level court, I take it as a man, but I just want to let you know that my form to be is not to disrespect no one, but I just couldn't leave it there, so, my vote is yes, and good night.
Thank you, Councilman, Madam President?
All right, so I said I wanted to leave here before twelve o'clock, but it is obvious that I do have to put some announcements, first and foremost, council members, you are all aware that Black History Month, we passed a resolution today in celebration of Black History Month, which will be held, the celebration will be held on Friday, February first, all council members, we're going to continue with the theme of honoring employees of the City of Patterson, so please, it is important that you all get your honorary name and information to the clerk, so that way the Corporation Council has sufficient time to prepare all of the resolutions. Okay, please, I know that with Hispanic Heritage Month, it became very difficult when you were getting stuff, you know, two days before, so please, very important, council members, you are now aware that today, Tuesday, we don't have another meeting till February fourth, okay, which means that we're gonna have our celebration on the first, so within the next day or two, I'd like you to please send that information to Madam Clerk. The other thing that I also want to say is, Moisés Santos definitely a special man, to Councilman Kalik, I know that he did have a family function, this is why he left, happy birthday to his wife, but Moisés Santos is someone who, who knows Councilman Kalik since he was very young, big supporter of Councilman Kalik's, and I, I, I've known the family for over twenty years, and he was a special man, and it is unfortunate that, you know, he lost his battle, and so his wake is going to be this Thursday, and my, my heart goes out to Elvis, to the entire Santos family, to Commissioner Jenny Formanteen, and your daughters, you know, to everyone, to the entire family. I had an opportunity to speak to Mrs. King when we took the break in my office, and you know, she expressed herself, I mean, broke down, and, and clearly you saw a different person, you know, sitting with her and having the conversation, she apologized for addressing the mayor and the council, I say you don't need to apologize, I mean, we understand it, and I, and I told her, so, to, to our BA, you know, please, 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 let all the powers that be know that the council also wants answers, there's a mother hurting right now, a father, and a family, and so, I told you if anything, you're definitely gonna have answers, I don't know where this is gonna go, but, you know, my heart does go out to the family. And then lastly, yeah, okay, so, actually, she had given me the information about Canaan and the service being held on Friday from ten to twelve, and I did excuse myself with her, I'm gonna try all my best to try to be there as Council President, it's just unfortunate the small window that was given, and the day, and unfortunately, I'm going to not be in the city on, on Friday, so I'm, I'm gonna try to, you know, make arrangements, so any council member that is able to be there in support of the family on Friday, I would appreciate it, all right, so, that's it, good night, Patterson, it is now midnight.